When it was a county infirmary and it was the courthouse. And it's evolved greatly since then. And you've seen that facility, I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful home.
Wonderful home. So, I don't know, I need to go any farther with this now. I think you've done a great job of letting us know what your expectations are and what you're doing. And now we have to look back at our facility and see, does it work or not?
Sure.
And I know that it's gonna cause some remarks, that's gonna cause some trepidations, some worry and headache and... Every time you make a change, it does. You know, I used to worry myself sick every time I changed the menu prices on my menu. After forty years, I kinda got past that. But anyway, you do, you worry about it.
Absolutely.
Is this gonna ruin everything? Is this gonna just chase people away?
And we do that in our organization as well. And as we're making changes, we have the same concerns. But as long as we're moving forward, we're making progress. If when we stop moving, then we're not making progress. So, that's, you know, it's a problem, that's what we're gonna do.
Do you have one more thing?
Well, I just, I wanna ask a question.
Sure.
Maybe this, if these veterans do have PTSD and these other things, why do they not qualify for some kind of assistance from the military or from the government? I mean, I don't understand that.
Most of them do. Most of them do. Most of them have a rating, most of them have VA healthcare that's available to them. Most of them are utilizing that. But then we're also putting veterans in a box. So, that goes back to what we just started this thing with. We cannot put a veteran in a box and say, because this is supposed to work and this textbook tells me it is, this is what's gonna work for you. That's why we have twenty-two veterans that are taking their life a day on the station. Because we're putting veterans in boxes, we have needs that are in that. So, yes, they can have that, but maybe they need more than that. Maybe that's enough for some, but maybe they need more than that. And I can tell ya, they need more than that.
Well, I'm not talking about, I'm asked financially, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
When I asked you about who would pay for their stay there.
We'd have to talk about what, again, we gotta talk about what that cost is. My veterans are not gonna be paid three thousand dollars for a shared room a month and that would be a little bit outrageous. So, we'll talk about that. Some of the veterans do have finances. And if it is something where our veterans need to pay, then that's gonna be budgeted. Nobody walks around getting stuff for free. Not on my ship, they don't.
It would be a lot more expensive if they went somewhere else than the Manor.
Again, I don't know what it costs to live at the Manor. I have no clue, no idea. I mean, but it's not about somebody going and getting a permanent. It's about, this is a healing shelter. It's a place to heal.
Yeah.
As auditor, though, now I'm speaking as the auditor. The Carroll Manor has to budget and they have to make their means and they, if they do not show a profit, they can be closed down. So, I mean, if you're bringing people in that aren't going to pay and just, and I know, just doing services, that does count, but it doesn't count in the long run that all the rest of these people that have lived there, a lot of, I mean, she does have people there that have lived ten, fifteen, twenty years of their life there and been paying.
Well, since we're on the infancy stages, which has been brought to the attention of four, then how, I guess I would need to have more details at that point. The infancy stages, I haven't been given the intel. I don't know what it costs the residents to live there. That's nothing I know. What I do know is probably the same amount electric will be used, whether my veterans are there or not. I do know if I'm providing all services for my veterans, that the only thing I'm seeing off the top of my head is we probably need to have a meal expense, which we can certainly do that as well. But again, I don't have this data.
But what I'm, I was going to say also is you would be taking away rooms that could've been rented to help her fund her budget and to keep alive.
Yes. And again, I don't know consistently how long these rooms have been empty. I don't know how many rooms are empty. I don't know what that statistic is. So, I guess that would have to be more intel that I would need.
That's one we have to be looking at. Yes, right.
I'm just, not looking at the Manor, there was a home at one time that was for the, you know, alcohol and drug addicts, but the one lady made, it wasn't in Camden.
It was a bowl, right?
For, since you're looking at starting smaller, the Manor is, that's a big step. Maybe find a home that needs upkeep, repaired a little bit and start small.
We are absolutely open to all of that.
I think your better option is to look at something like that, to better a home that has rooms and then, because the Manor, that is, I don't know, that's just...
We're open to any and all options. Like I said, I had union laborers that were ready to get ready and remodel, remodeled the Brethren Home and we were daily dollars short.
And Flora, I mean, she really did have a good rate, I mean, and I think people really saw that way.
I think it was for the women prisoners that they got asked that they could've lived there.
And is that smack dab in the middle of the town? Or is that on the outskirts?
It's on the highway.
Can we talk about that after the meeting?
It used to be on South Division Street.
Both of these two need to be heading out before too long. So, I appreciate it very much. Thank you for coming up today and thank you for what you're doing.
It's our pleasure.
Another Commissioner actions or a Commissioner order? Ted, you wanna tell us about that?
This is the website access, so the department heads and office orders can, if they want to, update their own content. I worked it out with Mr. Randy, paper, but he's, what he's saying, so it's ready for your approval.
Is this all the authority or the department heads acknowledging the executive order?
That's the, that's the document they've signed acknowledging the order.
I think the copy was just on the twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty, yes.
Twenty-twenty-one? This is basically saying like, just Cameron's been on me about this because he's got information he wants to put on the website about area plan. Now he has to submit it to the auditor's office and they have to put it on. If they put it on wrong, then he gets all the, he was putting it on himself and we talked about doing that.
And actually, that's why we have this, because if he puts it on wrong and then I approve it, I don't know it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's backwards. Good sheet.
So, this does not require, it's not a, it's not an ordinance to make that order, executive order, which requires if you already does, it's not requiring.
Okay. I make a motion to the executive order twenty-twenty-one.
So, is that ordinance saying that each department head is gonna read your account and be maintaining their webpage?
Well, it's not an ordinance, but executive order.
It's you will be able to put your own information up there and you can update it.
One person in your office will be able to access our website, put what you want on there.
You will have your own password.
Okay, so who's gonna train these department heads on how to be the webinar?
Randy will set it up.
He's gonna set up training, 'cause...
He's gonna set it up, I don't know how many, there will be one on the one, it may be, I don't know. He's gonna have to set up the account anyway, so he can get on.
This is just a step one to get it on.
Get that much done.
'Cause I know there's changes that need to be made on my website. I don't have the access. I also don't know how to do it. I'm not a webmaster.
I can get you there.
Okay.
And then you can, what I don't know how to do is how to put the, like, your forms on there. I've never learned that, 'cause I don't have time to do that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the training is the place for people to learn how to do that. Okay.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Motion fair. Just need one of those. Just need one? Two?
Two.
Okay, next item, appointments, Northwest Solid Waste District. I nominate Steve Pearson.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's done. Twenty-twenty moving contracts.
Wait a minute, it does have Paul Ryder on there too. They put that on there, the council did not really point him, but it came that way. So, I think if you read it, I think you have the point of the man.
Yeah, they point your own.
Look at it, 'cause it says the mayor already...
Executive.
Executive.
I don't have that thing on.
He was not it.
That is a certificate of appointment, right here with this.
I don't know that for a fact, I'm just trying to remember.
Paul Ryder is the council representative. They had booked their own name last time. Good. All stuff with it.
Says we need to by point on elected officials, so we need one from the council, I'm reaching out.
Okay, so I would suggest that we appoint Paul and if there's a change, we're gonna reappoint.
Yeah.
Right, sure.
Motion?
Yep.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
I think she must've seen this one right there.
Oh!
This is gonna look. Be ready to go.
Next item, moving contracts.
They have presented the same contract that they had last year. I believe the same prices were, and we had said at the last meeting that if the prices were the same, we need both of them. I talked to both of them and they presented those.
Motion to approve more lawn care contracts, cooking lawn service for Derek Creek Park and CNC Enterprise for the following, Flora, animal's garage, US twenty-one garage, Sheriff's Office, Prince Post Park, transfer station, the mayor, the Manor, can't walk through there.
Second, my second, sir. Okay.
This is the law, contracts were done so far.
Motion in seconds. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All right.
I think it's the autograph.
Next item, Commissioner's Certificate sale.
Last meeting, you asked for a list of him so you could go out and look at him.
Absolutely.
I didn't worry about that.
Yeah. We had, what was it, seven on the list? And I believe several of them have been on the tax, tax and commissioner's sale at least five times. This one has sold, but no one ever dated it over. One is not legally landlocked, but however, is not accessible. Another one sold in two thousand nine on the tax sale. And then in two thousand four for the commissioner's sale and it had dated to their, it had dated to their name and sold in two thousand fifteen and they're back on the tax sale. So, the parcel is not accessible except by the railroad. I believe the time and effort that we would take into these, when we give down to like three parcels, it is not worth it.
She's loved herself.
Because we wipe out the taxes if they do date it over and then they don't pay the taxes, then they're back on. So, do you still have your rest of what I gave you?
Um, probably.
The owner of this house has passed away. The house is a tear down. They have taken all the value off improvements. However, improvements do, did have value in eighteen, paying nineteen. So, there's a couple, maybe three, four, a bit beyond. But I would suggest you put it high enough that you won't lose money if you're going to do it. But you have postage, you still have your advertising and time involved.
Motion table. Sorry. Second to table, all in favor, please say aye. Any other business?
We got an ordinance here of one point dash zero, what's that one?
That's the...
What did you say it was? I'm sorry.
Which one?
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners for Carroll County for the thirty-one oh four, code to establish a fee for emergency medical technician reports.
Yeah, if you want to consider that today or if you read it by title only and adopt it, consider that to be quite entered by it.
Yeah. Read it by title. Is that read by title only?
So, the motion, two ordinance, three orders.
What is that?
The ordinance.
We have this.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to read this ordinance by title only. Beth, would you please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Beth, would you please read?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty dash oh one is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County amending thirty-one point oh four of the Carroll County Code to establish a fee for emergency medical technician reports.
That's it. And then it would be oh two.
Can we do this one all today?
Uh, that is entirely key. It needs to be written like title and then, and then you may consider, if you wanna consider it on the same basis introduction, that'd be a separate motion after you...
Steve, I have a question to read.
Right, so, can we read it by ordinance only?
Read it by title only.
Title only?
Yes, you may.
That'd be my motion.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty dash oh two. So, the motion can be read by title only.
Yeah, motion and second is read by title only. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Okay, Beth, would you please read it?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty dash oh two of the, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County prohibiting material support or resources for the enforcement of federal acts regarding firearms, firearm accessories and ammunition. So, you put this book on there.
Martin?
We're gonna sign it.
We have a admission to Carroll Manor here. I see, I think it's a self-pleaded.
General, there's no front end here.
I'm sure it's a... Motion to approve that application. So, a motion in a second to approve this application, all in favor, please say aye.
Nine after total be here, you look at the trip update on the gym.
I know somebody has been in, you know, I can bring them to that. It's not only agenda.
Sure.
But it is the cabinets that are down in the old museum area.
Sure, mine.
We had, we had somebody that came in and the Historical Society says that they're theirs. And with having a new head custodian, he wasn't sure what to do and I'm not sure what to do. And then it was also discussed that since they didn't take them with them, that they are the county's. It's a big wardrobe kinda looking and she is here today. I told them I would ask you guys today.
Aye.
Hi, I'm Trish Mendel. We own the Hometown Shirts and Graphics and we bought Fossen's next door.
Okay, would you come up to the microphone, so...
So, we were approached by the Historical Society if we would like the cabinets. They would like to keep them and have them used somewhere. And they didn't take them down there 'cause the ceilings weren't tall enough. And we have the capability of putting them in the store 'cause we opened up the ceiling to the original ceiling they had. So, they asked if we would like them. We came and looked at them, said, yeah, they would work. The previous janitor, I didn't realize it, but I guess he was supposed to bring it up to you guys to see if it was allowed for us to take them. Mark actually came to take them last Friday and was told, no, that he couldn't. But I guess the previous janitor was supposed to bring it up and he didn't. So, the Historical Society had basically just like had them used. And they said they'd been sitting down there and they thought they were gonna have to tear them out.
Well, I mentioned the Historical Society before, they need to get placed out.
Right. And they couldn't find anybody that would take them.
This is, this is one of those things that dates back quite a while as far as when the museum was down there, I constantly was saying, what of this belongs to the county and what belongs to the Historical Society? And the answer was always, all of it. So...
Well, that's untrue, 'cause people donate for them just to use and just contract.
Well, I know that they're, that answers were not correct, but that was the answer.
Right.
And we never did differentiate on who's this block down there. Now, I guess the question that needs to come up here is, is this something that should go through our auction? And be sold? Is this an asset of the county's or is it not?
I mean, truthfully, they're really not worth a lot and we're gonna have to completely redo them. They have the old heavy glass in there, which is truly dangerous, 'cause they're on the old pulley system. So, we would completely redo them. They're in the basement.
No, they're in the, they're along that wall of the old museum.
There's that one and then there's a self-contained one, it's like an oval shape.
Yes.
They just told me they would like to see them used and they thought it'd be nice to have them downtown. You know, and we are.
Tenured and advised force on how we decide this?
If there's no evidence that the county purchased them, then...
The county did not purchase them, for sure.
Yes, unless there's, then I believe the commissioners can kick the act to release them to whoever you want to.
Okay. Yeah, good, then that's a good reason.
Huh?
Loan you've used.
Up to the, they, they came from a store out there somewhere. They were, they were in a, in an old, one of the old stores.
I have a feeling, 'cause he said he would like to see them being used in a store again.
They came right across the street from somewhere and they were just donated into the, to be used by the museum. Whatever's the legislature's order, I just wanted to make sure that we all understood.
Been using them for ten years, just wanting to collect it though. You guys have taken them out?
So, there's the four of them and then there's an oval one too, that's just a free standing.
I like the oval one.
Yeah, it's kinda buried over there in a bunch of other junk.
I don't have a fault. But they're still there.
I'm pretty sure they were.
But they, you know, they came up, they went a long, long time after the museum moved out, so...
Right, the Historical Society, I mean, it was under their interpretation that they were there, they just didn't have a place to go with them. Yeah.
They had no way whatsoever to move. They stayed, they stayed longer than they were supposed to, they never, right? Not get out. They stayed in.
And that's what he told me, they didn't have a place to put them. So, they are big, they're tall.
It'd be a deal to get a wall.
Oh, yeah, he's gonna have...
They're gonna repair the walls.
They're gonna purge them out.
They're gonna repair the walls after they...
I don't know how they're even anchored in the wall.
I think they are in the walls. Yeah, they are in the walls. But it's like, I don't know, it's like a trashy piece of paneling that's at the back of it.
I don't think there's any backs of the real cabinets. They were upon, when, before the Superior Court came in, there was, the museum was on the third floor and the Superior Court they were in and that's where that they were. I mean, carry them all down, put them down in there, it would be a good...
Yeah, I know it's gonna be fun getting them out of there. I mean, Mark's gonna have to have several guys to help carry.
I would entertain a motion in any way here.
Interesting, interesting, I'll tell you that's about, in case something happened to you, okay? You do not represent the Historical Society?
No, I do not.
I would say, as the motion needs to state, that to authorize the removal of the cabinets from the former Historical Society area, subject to the acceptance of all risk by the department that removes them. And that would be you.
That would probably be us, I mean, Hometown. I mean, I, I'm sure there's gonna be damage to the wall when you take them out. I mean, I don't, 'cause they are fast.
Is it a corporation or an association?
No, it's an LLC.
LLC? I think we need to name that LLC for the record.
Okay, it's Hometown Shirts and Graphics LLC.
Did you get that, Beth?
So, basically what we're just, we're trying to protect is you don't go near the sludge here. I'm gonna get around it and pull it out and...
Well, or the glass falls, or it's gonna fall down. Okay, so...
Yeah, that'd be my motion.
That'd be your motion? Motion in a second, to allow the Historical Society to, for their, assignee to remove the... Tell me if I'm right on this, Ted.
Remove, tell our hometown...
Hometown Shirts and Graphics.
Okay, to remove...
LLC.
Right.
To remove the former Historical Society cabinets from the area of the courthouse, subject to their acceptance of full liability for damages to the evidence and risk personal injury.
I have nothing to the wall, 'cause I mean, there probably is gonna be some holes in the wall.
I'm sure there's gonna be some holes in the wall. We're just worried about just going there and just rip them off and chunk of plaster.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
So, do you have anything for us? I know we gotta do that through the three-person panel. Does that need to be done to date that? To keep moving forward?
What's that?
The three-person panel from the jail?
Yes. Well, actually, if the board has names to give, and I understand that you...
Yeah, I think you said you...
And to authorize, to contact those persons, seeking with building corporation. At least have a name and ready to go, 'cause we, we leave that to be formed.
Have you talked to any of those ones we talked about?
It's my understanding, I'm just gonna supply the names, so...
Let's start now.
We, Jeff Wise is one of them. Sean Ashby, I believe, out Camden. Another name was Lee Ward, but I think, talking to Ted, it might be a conflict of interest with him being in business with the other company. So, I brought up Mr. Venture's name.
As long as it's not an elected official, it can be a county employee.
Can you explain what this is?
Building corporation. If there is to be a jail built, because of two percent debt limitation, it has to be done by, with a lease. It's a, it's like the schools do, whenever they're, they have a capital project, they use a building corporation. The building corporation is organized, pointed by the, by the executive, which is the Board of Commissioners, three-member board. They, they actually hold title to the, to the site of the capital project, in this case, the jail. And then payments are made by the county for, for the bonds to a bank for the building corporation and through the term of leases of the jail to the county for the term of the bond issued. It's a, it's a legal requirement and the building corporation meets maybe half a dozen times during the life of the project and then they're just annual meeting thereafter until the bonds are retired. The building corporation can, can be reused if there's another capital project or if there was another related type of thing like a release or, or another thing that, or another purpose that could be used for other purposes. They serve without compensation. They serve on fairly short notice. They are subject to the open immunity law and they meet in the courthouse. And I would be there, I would be the one responsible for getting them organized and so forth and reports to the directions of the, of the term of state of the county for the bond issue.
Ted, you've done a very good job there in calling me a counter-soldier. Can we get that and written home so that...
Yeah.
I said that would be perfect.
So that...
Oh, yeah.
We, well, for one thing, any prospective person, I would want to be able to read all that and understand.
I put this in a memo that went to all of you by email. So, I'll, I'll just print that out and send it to you. They need to know that, they need to be able to read on, you know, we will have a schedule at some point. They need to know that, they need to be able to read on, you know, we, we will have a schedule at some point, some idea. They'll, they'll be organized, they'll, they'll sign an acceptance and they'll elect a president and a secretary. And they won't have any responsibility for running. They won't have any responsibility with regard to the project. What, the project is going to be defined by the Board of Commissioners and, and, you know, and of course for plans that are prepared and approved by the Board for, for the jail. So they're a legal entity that, that has to be in place to, to lease the project back to the county for the term of the bond issue. But all the money will go through a paying agent or, or trustee bank, they won't have to handle money. Uh, they won't have to, uh, they will, the commissioners will approve a contract and then the, the, the contract will be signed for building corporation, but they won't have any opportunity to make changes in the, in the project or anything like that. It's strictly a controlled, not a corporate corporation, three-member corporation. Uh, there's no other members, no, no stock, no, no compensation, no. That's why it can be county employees, I believe, because they, they don't receive compensation, so they're violating the provision, there's dual compensation. But I'll make a copy of that memo that I sent to you.
What is our timeline on this, when we got that?
Well, we, we're, we're only behind in February, this portion happened today to, to the point then. But I, I don't, I don't, I, I mean, it's not too late, but we need to have the names so they can be organized.
And see if they'll accept it.
Oh, yeah, right. Uh, and they, they shouldn't be somebody close that can come to the courthouse, you know, on, on fairly short notice. We have to obviously comply with forty-eight hours notice for meetings. They won't have a predetermined schedule of meetings, they won't be doing like the first Monday event thing. Although we'll try to schedule their meetings so that they follow commissioners meeting, uh, like during lunch hour if any of them are still employed. A lot of times you want somebody that has time to do this, that's community-minded or that Tobe knows is, is favorable to the project and wants to see it done and so forth. That's the idea.
Well, do we need to put, since we're behind, we can't do it till the next meeting anyway, do we need to put an ad in the paper, anybody would be interested?
I don't think so. I, I.
I think it might be.
I'm not a local person.
Well, there's at least three other names that are, that I've heard tossed out, but you mentioned some of them already.
You gave like one, two of them.
I believe, Chris Mears, George.
George Mears?
George Mears. And then, uh.
I did some.
Uh, Mary Robeson.
County clerk?
Yeah. So. I think we can get to any of the names mentioned here that are viable candidates.
It's an appointment made by the commissioners, so you're, a commissioner or commissioners are the ones that say, would you serve on that building corporation? And the schools use them more often than counties because this county doesn't build that many jails and.
Okay, we, we need to find a mechanism for us to find us people. You want to view or engage or contact people and find out if they want to share one?
Sure, my motion will build, contact these people to see if they're interested.
I have one second. I did talk to two of them.
I ran into George.
So I need to give more information. That information just hold us, thank God.
Going to vote on that?
Huh?
Going to vote on that?
For you to contact all of them?
Well, yeah, but I don't have, I got a blank sheet here.
Jeff, I'm going to send it to Ben here.
I thought the six names that they.
You have those names?
That were in order and Ali was presenting, I'll give them to you.
Okay. You do what?
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion to need to contact these people, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I did, can we move on? I have two more things.
Okay.
This is from Hartman and Williams, it's just an update of their engagement letter. I have the funding in my budget, they're just including twenty twenty. Is there any change in that?
Okay, so we need a.
Motion.
Tell, tell me.
They helped with.
Tell me or us what.
They helped with the financial, the annual financial report they have for the last couple of years and, and then anything that's discrepancies between that's carried over on the cash book, she's helped with that, but that really is for the financial, you know. She's very, very good at her job, she doesn't do it, she just instructs me on what to do so we can get it going.
And you have the money for this in your budget?
Move it through the contract with Hartman rule?
Motion and second for Hartman, Hartman and Williams contract, all in favor, please say aye. Motion passed.
The other one is with the county clerk, she has a contract, um, that's an update for her maintenance, I'm going to let her present that.
This is an amendment and it's only for the service portion of our contract. Um, the election board has approved it and I've also given Mr. Johnson his, her, her work has reviewed it. And it was also included in the budget for this year, so it's already been budgeted for. It'd be an additional sixteen hundred for first installment, we have three installments left, one installment per year. Uh, the, the change in the service is that we'll have a fighting maintenance of all of our election equipment. They'll come in and do everything, if anything needs to be repaired below. And if anything breaks, they will come fix it. Right now we have the inlet, what we've gone waiting, it's waiting, something's going on there.
She sent it to me, not to you, that's, that's okay.
What's that?
She is, she sent it to me by email.
This is, yeah, this is, what? This is for the beast of election.
For our equipment?
Voting, voting machine.
Right, it's all of our election equipment and once it's, once our leases are completed, we have option to purchase it.
So one election is going to cost us two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, that's for the entire lease, um, there's a breakdown of our yearly payment. And the only change to it is a sixteen hundred dollar increase per year. It, it's been.
So goes for three years, for three.
We only have two years left almost.
Three years left.
Yes.
Fourteen-five thousand, gee, we are.
Jeff, do you know you're having a tension meeting today?
The price was already in the original.
Okay, you might tell it.
The amendment is just an increase for the service portion of the lease.
So Larry put some new sixteen hundred in there?
It's already in the budget and we already have this in motion.
Motion to approve, John, Greg?
I'll say it.
All in favor, please say aye.
That is all I have to present, I believe.
Hey, you knew it last time, no?
Anything else come through? Thank you.
Motion to, here.
All in favor, say aye.
And Warren, you said you were here, huh?
He went for his.
You don't, you're going forward, aren't you? You're looking quite a bit.
Does she have the crown that she took from the trans?
Sorry about that.
Well, that's okay.
Uh, yeah, move, I need. Warren, I'm all for it.
Yeah, oh my gosh. I saw you, I'm just wondering.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah. So be fine. We're good. Okay, thank you. I, I should be here and I'm going to tell the custodians.
You had to even run here three months. Wow, where's time gone? And you had to even.
Eating Sunday, I guess, almost every last. Okay.